I'd like to call the Western Reserve Local School Board of Education meeting to order. We'll call.
Mr. Bledow?
President?
Brian Bledow?
President.
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 Please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Okay, back to the agenda. Treasurer's recommendations. It is recommended that the minutes of the July 14 regular meeting of the Board of Education be approved as mail to each member in advance of the meeting. So moved.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Yes.
It is recommended that the July 2014 financial reports be approved, July listing of bills be approved as mail to each member in advance of the meeting. Some move.
One second. Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Yes. It is recommended that approval be given to the board members superintendent, treasurer to attend the OSBA Capitol Conference to be held in Columbus, November 9 through 12, 2014. Also to appoint as a board's delegate and an alternate. Uh-uh. You did that to me last year.
He got lost.
Don't appoint me.
I'll do it. I'll do the appointee thing and use me as a delegate.
Okay.
He's the alternate?
Mm-hmm.
So move.
One second. Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
It is recommended that the following fund be added to the district's chart of accounts for the purpose of raising funds for the prom, homecoming, and graduation. This would be for the class of 2018. Wow.
Second. One second. Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
It is recommended that the FY '15 consolidated application for the following federal grants be approved for the 2014-15 school year. And you have those in front of you. I'm not going to read all those. So move.
One second. Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
It is recommended that to authorize the athletic director to hire athletic workers as necessary in between board meetings. Some move. Sorry.
This is, we had tabled this, this is the same things that we had tabled last month. We did a little bit of research about what you have to do with anybody who keeps scorebook, runs a clock.
Oh, okay.
Any relationship with, with a little contest.
So you have to, you have to tie on them. Mr. Daniel, there's a lot of checking.
Yeah, the county people basically said this is not expected in the state of Alabama.
It is.
I guess the actual determination is if the majority of those questions are answered.
The 20 question, and not with the.
But it was.
The 20 question quiz is what was given.
You mean to omit the BCI and FBI, Brian? Or no?
No, as far as we have to be happy.
We had a treatment.
Treat them as employees on payroll or not. There's a 20-question check off. So basically, we don't have a choice.
Not really.
And we talked to the school attorney about this.
We could do it, but we'd be at risk.
Yeah. We'll find.
That's crazy. Um, Mr. Bledow? Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Yes.
And these next two, follow where.
Number seven, it is recommended that the requirement for an FBI, BCI be waived for athletic workers. So move.
One second. Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, that's just for these workers or that's all athletic workers?
Just for, just for those that are working like that. Because sometimes it's students, sometimes it's.
So it encompasses even people that are not going to be on this list that we're going to correct?
We're going to start.
If somebody new comes up.
As we did in number six, was giving the.
Yeah. Got you.
Hire those types of people.
We'll do it like substitute lists where I just bring you a couple of names every time.
Okay.
And we'll just keep them on the list. That way they don't have to fill out any paperwork every year. I'm not going to make that.
Right.
Number eight, it is recommended that the following be approved as athletic workers. There's a whole list there. So move.
One second. Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
Superintendent's recommendations. It is recommended that the 2014-15 bus routes be approved as annually required by the Ohio Department of Education Transportation Division. Also that authorization be given to the superintendent for his designee to make changes in them as needed. Second.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
Those are pretty much unchanged from year to year. Pretty much both. We have about any roads that we, just about hit every one of them.
Okay. Number two, it is recommended that the 2014-15 student handbooks be approved. Those are in your pack.
It has been last month.
I think it was the last time.
Yeah. So moved.
Back in. Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Number three, it is recommended that the 2014-15 student activity accounting handbook be approved and distributed to all activity advisors. There are no changes. Some move. Second.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Yes.
Number four, it is recommended that the 2014-15 class fee list be approved with the following changes. Family consumer sciences, $10 formerly six, industrial arts, $10 formerly six.
I think those have been $6 since I started here 10 years ago. So the cost of the food that they buy for cooking class and materials for shop class, that's only for those kids that take those elective classes.
It's still pretty usable.
So move.
Second. Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
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 Number five, it is recommended that Brenda Danocker be hired as a five-hour cook beginning with the 2014-15 school year pending all required paperwork.
These are the positions that we had from last spring with some retirement and additional janitor position over at the Reserve Building. So Doug and Debbie spent most of the day yesterday interviewing and came up with three, three pretty good people that we've had for those positions. That five-hour cook was the three-hour cook that we had made it a five-hour position. Terrell Peterson was the one who was doing the three-hour. She moved into Martha's spot as a six-hour, which created that opening.
So move.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
It is recommended that Richard Hedrick be hired as a three-hour janitor beginning with the 2014-15 school year pending all required paperwork. Second.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
It is recommended that Elizabeth Martin be hired as a three-and-a-half-hour teacher aide beginning with 2014-15 school year pending all required paperwork.
So move. One second. Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
It is recommended that Jared Torarci be added to the certified substitute list. So move.
Sorry.
Second.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, number nine, it is recommended that Jennifer Johnson, Richard Pellon, and Janine Barto be added to the classified substitute list.
Richard is here. He's a bus driver, newly trained, and he's going to be a sub-bus driver for us. I'm not sure if you're able to.
Is Barto, is that Mr. Barto's boy?
Barto?
No, I don't think.
That's, um, that's Jerry's sister-in-law.
Okay.
Yeah, that's her sister-in-law.
You know, they're.
She is, I, I don't know what Jennifer Johnson is. I know that Janine wants to be trained in secretarial, like in the offices, and we need somebody, so we're going to train her, I know, in the elementary office as a, you know, for secretary. That's her background. She'll have a kindergarten year, not this year, but the following year.
Some move. Second.
Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
It is recommended that Deborah Calley be reinstated for section 5.053 of the master agreement between the Western Reserve Board of Education and the Teachers' Organization of Western Reserve Tower as a middle school special education teacher for the 2014-15 school year.
She was a fifth-grade teacher last year, and then the numbers going into sixth grade, we were able to handle that with the sixth-grade staff that we had. So she was riffed because of that last year. And then with the need with our special ed numbers for a second special ed teacher to middle school enabled us to bring her back. So that's why she was fifth-grade teacher last year. She's back as special ed teacher. She had licensure for both regular ed and special ed. And she had tutor, special ed tutor for a year or two.
She was, she actually was a Title I tutor. She's been with us for almost six years as a tutor.
So move.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Bledow?
It is recommended that the 2014-15 athletic department coach's handbook be approved as submitted by Athletic Director Jeff Mardick. Second.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Number 12, it is recommended that Damon Bunte be hired as an unpaid volunteer varsity football coach for the 2014-15 school year.
Damon is the teacher we hired for social studies. Staff was already set. He's just super excited about being here. He had an opportunity for a paid position at Campbell, and he would rather would be here where he's teaching and will do that.
You can't feel touched as I thought.
But, you know, in the future, certainly will look for some.
So move. Second.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Okay, number 13, it is recommended that Carla Duda be removed from the supplemental contract list as mentor for 2014-15 school year.
What had happened here was, at the end of the school year, we have the teachers turn in if they would like to continue with supplementals they had from the previous year. Drama club, yearbook, all those things. And Carla had put hers in as a mentor teacher. Well, we only need a number of mentor teachers depending on how many new teachers we have. So what we ended up doing was we hired two mentor teachers at this resolution that we're talking about, and we really don't need one this year, so.
But don't all supplements have to be ripped, have to be done away with at the end of the year now?
Yeah, but we rehired, we did them for this school year coming up.
Oh, okay.
But she was on that list at that point in time. We just lumped that in with all the other supplementals that we continue with every year, and we've learned from our mistake, the number of mentor teachers changes from year to year depending on how many new staff members. So Damon's the only staff member we have that will need a mentor teacher, and Chrissy Hughes is doing that, who we approved along with Carla.
So move.
Second. Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Yes.
It is recommended that the 2014-15 Western Reserve Building rental use application be approved.
Again, this, we updated this a little bit. Kathy and I met with the school attorney last week and went over a lot of different things. He looked this over, thought it was very good. Again, we increased the utility fee to $10 an hour. It was $6 an hour forever, I think. And again, it's one of those things depending on the group. For example, Pee-wee football is going to be here Saturday for a preview. They're done at 3 o'clock. I'm not going to charge them a utility fee because they're not really using a whole lot. But the one game they play, the night games, we're going to charge them, you know, for a few hours of using the stadium lights. So we'll kind of use it that way. The custodial fee, you know, varies. We've also put a place on here for any of those groups outside of school groups, Pee-wee football, Boy Scouts, any of those, to provide proof of liability insurance that they cover. So we kind of added that on. That was kind of an unwritten thing, but anymore, it's just something.
Who's administering that?
Pardon me?
Who is administering the.
Between, well, I get the forms and then as far as the billing and that goes, we try and resolve.
So move. Second.
Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, number 15, it is recommended that Robert Gion be approved as an unpaid volunteer football equipment manager for the 2014-15 school year.
Bob has had much experience working with various schools and I think even some colleges as equipment manager. You know, it's pretty crucial to have somebody that can fix a helmet strap or put a face guard on. He's, he's organized all the uniforms, all the, you know, kind of that's, that's his, going to be his responsibility. He's really not working with the kids as a coach or anything like that. He's just organizing all the equipment. Game day, he'll be the one passing out uniforms.
And he's free.
And he's free. He's, he really is.
He's got plastic about not having too many extras. You know, out of the field.
I know, and, and I've already, Jeff and I have talked and, and, you know, we're going to tell these coaches from now on, once your season starts, we're not, unless it's emergency, we're not adding on.
Agreed.
Andy, we all know Andy.
Yeah.
And I use the example, when, when I walk by somebody and say, hey, how you doing? I really don't want to know how they're doing and get their life story. Andy's the kind of person, hey, come on around, you can help us. Well, they do, and things are good, and everybody wants to be part of that, and then it's, well, here, these guys want to help. Bob has experience. Joe Stevens was head coach at Merrill Rich for many years. So I guess, and I, I'm all for that 100 percent, but on the other hand, when you can get some talented people to help out, it's kind of nice, too. So, but we.
I've heard positive comments.
Pardon me?
I've heard some positive comments come around about the level of coaching.
Yeah.
The staff.
I think, you know, and, you know, we've talked a lot about that, and, you know, we've got a lot of good kids, but what the coaches do can make that difference to the next level of success. I think he's got a pretty good group right now, and they really, we've seen new work.
It's not that everybody has a job, but yeah, we talked about, yeah, not having people in the group just to.
Right.
Well, this is the manager guy even took their belts and spiraled them around and set them all on their benches so that when they came to the locker room, they were, like the jerseys were there, the pants were folded, and the belts were swirled around and sitting on there. They didn't know how to act.
It's kind of the.
A little bit.
It's a touch of class, I guess, you know?
Yeah, it is. It was, they, they, kids really liked it, yeah.
Like I said, he's.
He's into it.
Yeah. Oh, he is, yeah. He couldn't have one equipment out there that got everything. Those pieces. And that'll help, again, with the inventory at the end of the year when the kids are turning stuff in.
They'll save money.
Instead of us chasing stuff down even into March and April trying to find football stuff, it'll be in and done. Good for that, too.
So move. Second.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Spock?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Bledow?
Yes.
It is recommended that Joe Stevens be approved as an unpaid volunteer varsity football coach for 2014-15 school year. So move.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Mrs. Spock?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Building principles. Debbie, you want to go first or Deb?
Of course, of course. I'm sure. We're back in action. Really, just tomorrow is kindergarten orientation. We've been doing kindergarten jumpstart and success by six all summer long. I mean, they've been, kids have been in, our kindergartners are, they could probably tour people around the building. They've done a great job, and with that, a nice turnout. Katie and Amanda, the two kindergarten teachers, they're actually running that, so it's been good. Kindergarten orientation is tomorrow, 10 o'clock. If you're in the area, stop by and meet our new kindergarten group. Meet the teacher. We started that last year. That'll be on the 25th at 6 o'clock at night. And we just figured it was easier for parents to come in, meet the kids' teachers, kind of see what's going on in the classroom, what the expectations are, and they bring all their supplies in, drop them off, and then on the first day of school, they can come in their cute little outfits and just come to school and not drag two big bags with them. Just something new for this year. I think we talked about it a little bit. The kindergarten readiness assessment is new this year. Both of the teachers and the tutors have been trained. You have to be officially certified, so they're all officially certified, and it's basically testing these little guys, and it's on social, emotional, math, science, English, reading, like reading readiness, phonemes, that kind of thing. It's big, and that's on top of the other diagnostic. It's on top of the kindergarten readiness assessment for literacy. So these little, these little guys will be tested for probably the first three, well, we won't test them the first, that, three days, but after that, for about three weeks, we'll be doing testing with them as per the state and federal government. And that's that. That's where we are. All of our third graders, I think I gave you the, I think in the report that I gave at the, at the last meeting, all of our third graders met, they passed the OAAs. We didn't have to retain anyone or write a plan for anybody. We had some safeguards in place. We had great participation, I think 96 or 97 percent participation of our parent group, the intervention group. So it's good. Good summer. Yep.
We're getting all geared up, ready to go another couple of weeks. Teachers are starting to come in now, put their, their couple of workdays in. They're in just about every day now. But we're ready to go. Year two for me here. I have to compliment Ed and his crew again, Karen Marbone and Sandra Powell, Joe Sinfoni and Dave. Did a great job. We finished on schedule last week with the building. If you happen to notice, the hallways are now white. They've not been white since we moved in the building. Done a great job of cleaning everything, walls, windows. We still have a few things we're working on. But again, compliment to Ed and the guys and the girls. They've really worked, worked pretty hard from scrubbing walls.
The floors are now wet.
White.
They're white.
The floors.
White.
Oh.
Very yellow.
Yellow. Oh, okay.
The new machine we bought and then what we're doing with them has really brightened up the floors, all the classrooms, every classroom walls are done, windows are done. Everything's been wiped down, even up on some of the rails. Everything's been wiped down, even up on some of the rounds, we've really had to get up there on a rickety 40-year-old list that we have, but I think the list's older than that, but could I tell you? Am I right? Is older than you?
Got one year on you.
One year on you, yeah.
Good teamwork.
But again, done a great job, and we've been, everything's gearing up, getting busier each day.
Well, thank you, and that was, that was a good compliment for the staff, and I'm sure you've shared that with them as well.
Oh, we have.
It's always good to hear some good things and not always, you know, the bad things, so congratulations to.
Well, we did something a little different. We basically team cleaned this year on everything, and it really, we're going to continue that into the school year because it put three or four people in a room at the same time. It gets done a lot quicker. As I said, we finished on schedule last week, and they worked hard, I can tell you.
We appreciate it.
They need to be outside a little more now because they've been inside all summer. Right?
Yeah, that's cool.
You're good, right?
Yeah.
Does anybody here from Tower? OC? Ed?
Well, I'm, what I'm saying, it was been a very good summer this summer. It was nice being able to work together as a team, and I appreciate, we all appreciate the new equipment you allowed us to buy, and it really did make a huge difference on getting this building cleaned up. Amazing on how clean things came, so we're excited to work towards a better year next year, and just keep moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone here after PTL?
If you'll notice.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I screwed up.
Mr. Martin?
Sorry. Get out of this way. I'm here. Always start on the bus. I have, I gave Mr. Blevins and Ms. Powell their ITCL pass. We met earlier. I got the ones for the rest of board members here, so pick us up before we leave. Season passes are on sale now in the superintendent's office. If you know anybody who's interested, they can get, pick them up there or contact me, I can get it to them. Football scrimmages are underway, or not underway. We play tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. at Jackson-Milton. Next Friday is home against Pine Valley at 7:00 o'clock this evening. Expecting a lot of people here for that. The first game, just a reminder, is on Thursday, August 28th, at Columbia Firestone Park, so make sure if anybody says, oh, our game's Friday, it's not, it's Thursday. It will be on the radio. I think we actually are scheduled for three radio games this year. The game of the week schedules, they don't come out until the week prior. Right now, we're scheduled for three radio games, which will be nice. Volleyball, I'm sure most of you could hear, there's scrimmage in tonight. They're really getting ready for a great season. We're expecting a lot of great things out of them. Football, golf, everybody, I mean, we have a lot of talented teams this year. Golf and girls' golf, boys' and girls' golf have both started their season, have had a couple of matches in already, doing really well. Cross country has been practicing, I believe their first meet is actually next Saturday, so got a lot of, he's got, he's got close to 29 or 30 kids this year, so the numbers have really jumped in the past couple of years, which is, which is great. They have a lot of, and they make it fun to be there, so, and it's hard to do when you're running around like that. On September 5th, which is actually the first home football game, I was approached by a couple of community people to recognize Howard Young for his years of service, so we'll be putting something together for halftime of the game, and we're going to have his family come out and probably put an ad in the roundup. So we'll do that September 5th. If you know anyone or see anyone, make sure you let them know. And then the last thing is, we did that remind 101 through the spring for baseball and softball cancellation delays and stuff, and we're going to look to carry that through the rest of the year with football announcements, with football, different athletic, athletic ones, coaches ones we put together, and I'm going to put those in the roundup this September. And you have to, you just type, text the number and put whatever group you want to be subscribed to, and anytime we send out an alert, you get that text. So it's really nice. We've done with football, I think there's 60-some people signed up for football, so it's working out really well. Baseball and softball is real successful, so it's a good way just to get information out very quickly, so we're going to do that again for the remainder of the year. If there are any questions.
And then also on that first home football game, too, at the beginning, we're going to recognize Reverend Lipp.
Your side, okay.
What's that?
Okay, yeah, your service, Reverend.
Yes. We want to recognize his 25 years of service. Yeah, but don't put that on TV, because it's supposed to be his pride. Edit that.
If he watches it. All right, that's all I have, I'm good.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and be there. I'll go up some.
Very good. Except for the minor injury, you can't move today. Ow, nice ditches in the head. Aaron just told me, because, you know, he should pay.
Thank you, Jeff. Good report.
Debbie, do you want to speak to the board?
I gave them the letters. I don't know if you want to speak.
Well, yeah, I mean, I can, do they read the letter? Do they even have a chance to read the letter?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I didn't know if that was something that the board could discuss. That's really all I wanted to come here for. As you can see, our pay is very low, and it's really not in line for what bus drivers have to do, so I'd just like you guys to reevaluate that pay. Because I'd like to become a full-time, you know, a sub full-time, but I can't afford to do it at $9 an hour, and I have to go recertified, and I need to know prior to recertifying what school was willing to have me be a sub, but I can't do it for $9 an hour. I just can't, and I want to sub here because I know the kids, I know the school, I know the roads, I know everything, but I can't do it for that pay, so that's it.
Thanks, Lea. Bye.
Okay, in front of the reserve building, if you noticed, we had done some digging. We put a drain in there. The way the, with the driveway and the building, we've got a low spot in there, and so we put drains and tied into the catch basin out to the east of the building. And then I've got some prices on, just some landscaping in the front of the building, mostly stone, easy to maintain. I know even my own place, that mulch is gone by the middle of summer and keep replacing it, so since we had the stone on the west side of, of the building, we're going to, we'll finish it out with stone up to the, the end of the reserve building. So the drain's in, we're just waiting, giving it some time to settle a little bit, so that the, one good thing about all the rain we've had is that helps that settle a little bit, anyway, the dirt, so we got that done. I am working on revising our policy manual. We talked to the school attorney on the best way to do that, and I, I've got the packet from OSBA, we're going through. Probably two-thirds of what we have is, is good. There's some update, there's some new policy that's required that we need to adopt, there's some revisions to some existing policy. The way he suggested that we do that is to basically give you a packet, I'm hoping to have that by the October meeting, to say, these are the policies that we are going to do revisions on. It might be changing a couple of words, it might be, for example, there was now, as far as weapons, our old policy said that a student that possessed a weapon on school property could be expelled for up to a year. Well, now law is, is a student who brings, maybe they don't have it on them, they bring it and give it to somebody. So just some of those, those will be the types of revisions. The new policy would be things with laws that have changed that we have to update and change. We're going to go to a new filing, not a filing system, but a new numbering system to find the policy. Our old policy, every page was just numbered individually, and if you went to add a page...
Oh, yeah.
19A, B.
Exactly. So OSBA has a filing system that everything under section A, which would be board governance, is file AA, AB, AC, and then if you add something to AB, you call it AVA, and it's just very simple, really, and it just cleans that whole mess up because we've got stuff in the wrong sections that we're just stuck in. So anyway, I'm working on that and trying to make that a little bit easier to find. I'm also, we never had this in our old policy, also referencing all the Ohio Revised Code and laws that specify things about that particular policy, so it should clean it up, and moving along pretty well. July went real well, and then August, when everybody started coming around and walking into the office to ask about this or that, it was harder to do, so.
Regulations.
Yeah, and, and also, we have some, policy is a general statement about the running of the school district according to law. Then there's regulations, which are procedures that you would use to administer a policy. Well, in our policy manual, we have several regulations that are adopted as policy. They don't contradict, but it's kind of overkill of what the policy is, so clean up some of that, and they really, really have a, a good way of following through, and very simple thing, the regulations are all on yellow paper. So when you're going through the policy manual, if it's yellow paper, it's a regulation, and even have sample forms for something, so we'll get that cleaned up and hopefully have that in the next couple of months.
And then the auditors come in.
Yeah, and then when the auditors come in and they want to see if you have a policy on this, and then you've got to go through the index and find.
They fall there.
Yeah, so. Electrical update from our facilities commission. They're supposed to be here next Tuesday to start that work, and most of the materials are, are in already. We're going to come and get that done, and hopefully we can get, get that all wrapped up and close it up.
How long do they think that'll take?
About a week, yeah. And they said there really shouldn't be any issues with the power being shut off to do the work they're doing. I met with Soil and Water and the engineer and the architect on our retention pond out there that was the second issue. For whatever reason, we come to a very good conclusion.